Okay, hi everyone, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. So if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Scott, if you could do the roll call?
Mr. President, Ms. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Shrobel?
Here.
Mr. Reeves, here. Ms. Leoni?
Yeah.
And Ms. Olson?
Here.
We are all here.
Okay, procedures for public participation are on the board docs. Someone's getting to it. They're all listed right there. We will, do we do agenda edits before public participation?
Yes.
Okay, let me add one quick agenda edit. Under Personnel, 4B13, School Board, number one nomination of Ashley Godfrey from Region 3. For the Board, we will get there, but we do have somebody who is interested in joining the Board that's here tonight. Do any of the other Board members or administration have any agenda edits?
I have one under appropriations.
Okay.
Would be 3A2.
Okay.
And that would be a recommendation that the WAB first student day, the school year of 2021, to Monday of August 31st.
Okay, and that'll be 3A2, correct?
Yes.
Anyone else have any agenda edits? Okay, seeing none, time for participation of the public if you have any comments on any agenda items. Anyone in this room, we'll give a couple of minutes for folks from another room to come over if they want. I know, right?
We don't have audio next door, if you can give us a minute, they missed the agenda edits. Mr. Matt is working on it.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll have it on the camera.
Okay.
Anybody have a question?
Okay. You can wait at the door and then it'll be your turn in a second, okay?
Okay, looks good.
Hi, my name is Amy Hicks, I represent the Teachers of the Danube.
Is that, is the audio on on that mic?
Should be.
Is it turned on?
Sorry. It might.
I'm Amy Hicks, I represent the Teachers of the Danube Education Association. I just want to thank the Board and Administration. So far, this has been a very cooperative, working together of all the stakeholders involved. I anticipate that that will continue as we move forward. This is unprecedented, I don't think I need to say that, and it's good that we're working together and I hope that that continues. I can also say I'm not a scientist, I've only ever taught fourth grade science, so I can't promise that I have all of the answers, not being a scientist myself. I am very, very frustrated that these decisions are being left to school boards, and I don't mean that as an insult to you, I just mean that it's so widely different, what's happening from neighboring school district, which is making it so much harder than for community and parents to kind of figure things out. I think what you have before you tonight is three bad choices, and you have to choose the least bad of the three. You know, opening in full, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that if we open full for all of our students, we will not have social distancing, you won't have three feet, we won't have six feet, we will minimize travel in the hallways, and they'll be one directional, but it won't change the fact that we'll have most of our student population, maybe minus a third, within the buildings seven hours a day within an enclosed space, so that's not ideal. The hybrid option seems pretty doable in many ways. We get the balance of in-person and the social distancing, but there are issues that have yet to be answered. We don't have space to spill over to. If we have to quarantine a classroom, where does that space exist? If we have multiple classrooms that need to be closed for multiple days, how will we address that? When we have teachers who need to quarantine for a two-week period, where are those subs coming from? We can't get subs on a regular basis. Now, I think it will be substantially harder. And worse when we have teachers who are ill and need to be out for even longer than a two-week quarantine period. So those are issues that we have not fully addressed with the hybrid model. The red model, fully virtual, I think that's definitely our safest option, but clearly it's not ideal. We know the value of human connection and education and why, you know, that's why we do what we do. So again, you've got kind of three terrible options, you need to choose the least bad one. I'm not a scientist, my brother is, he's a PhD at the National Institute of Health in Washington DC, currently working on COVID, and he shared with me the sobering statistic today. He said that children 18 and under right now are being infected at a rate of about 7%. Of that 7%, we're looking at 1% maybe having grave health conditions requiring hospitalization, and less than 1% of those being deaths. When you think about that not as a statistic, but as our children, our neighbors, that's a pretty sobering thought. And then, of course, we know how that is ratcheted up when we deal with all the other adults that are in the building as well. So I do appreciate that you're here, I join at the decision that you're about to make, but I will tell you that DVEA, our association, is committed to giving the best education that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Judge Martina, 225 West Welsh. We didn't have the audio on in the room next door, were there any agenda edits about the reopening?
Just one about the reopening. We, they're on the agenda now, there will be a vote on the possibility of delaying the start of school to the 30th?
Well, this 31st.
31st.
But the rest of the agenda is what was posed.
Oh, well.
There's one other agenda.
And then there was one other agenda item, we will be voting on the nomination of a new School Board member from Region 3.
No, I'm just talking about the reopening. You had voted to reopen in school with the option of virtual. It was published in the Reading Eagle, "In School With The Option Of Reopening." Your agenda today says, all of a sudden, you're talking about blended reopening.
The X that's by there is, this is the presentation that's being given by the school administration. It was their recommendation that we do that, do the blended learning, when we actually voted for all five days. It is still their recommendation, that's why it says that in the document that we are voting on, but we may change that when we get there.
Well, I don't know how you do that without it ever being discussed in public, because that was not what you voted on.
We notified, it was said in the last Board meeting, when we voted to go to school all five days, that the administration's recommendation was that we go with a hybrid learning model. And it is still their recommendation.
You've got a lot of two-family incomes nowadays, I don't know what you think you'd be doing to them, where every other week they have to find daycare for their kids. That wasn't really the reason I came up here, though. And this is not necessarily a complaint, because COVID caught everybody by surprise, but your online education in the spring was worthless. My granddaughter's teacher got online perhaps an hour a day, read them a story, gave them assignments, and got off. So they were basically self-educated. So if you go to any kind of virtual learning this year, which I don't agree with, I think kids that age need the social interaction, and they need a teacher who can see their facial expressions and body language, and know if they're learning the material or not. But if you do have virtual learning, either by choice or because you force it, my question becomes, what are you gonna do to ensure that the kids are actually taught, not what happens in the spring?
Well, what happened in the spring was considered crisis teaching, because it was last minute. This has been prepped for over the summer, which is why we're asking for the delay in the start of the school year, so there can be more in-service on the new setup, the new learning module online.
So the kids would have the teacher start to finish?
No. And I'm sorry, your three minutes are up, so I'm sorry about that, but thank you for bringing your comments to us.
Thank you.
I do want to say that, you know, I approached everything with the last year of school, and I still approach it this way now, our teachers, our students, our administration, we were all trying to do our best, you know. I feel that all of our students were trying to do their best, all of our teachers were trying to do their best, which meant that, you know, we should be willing to cut the teachers a little bit of slack, because it was an awful situation, and we, and the teachers in turn, cut the students some slack, you know. I don't appreciate characterization of anything our students are provided with by our teachers as worthless.
My name is Hannah Petillo. I'm here because my daughter will be attending in person, and I have a concern regarding not needing consent to, for her to be a participant in the live stream. I have concerns because she is a student with an IEP.
Will that be a difficulty here in her?
Sorry. I have concerns with my daughter participating in the live stream without consent. She has an IEP, I'm fearful that because she will be in the live stream, it will be seen that she has an IEP.
I really don't, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but did you send me an email right before this? I intended to email you again, the only reason is because what you're discussing is important, but it's some of the details you provided me with, I didn't want to like go into them within a group setting like this. I do think that your questions are not, I'm gonna ask Dr. Cooper to maybe address them a little more generally, general, but if you keep your comments general, as much as you can, if that makes sense, okay.
I think what it boils down to is my concern for her privacy. I was told that consent is not needed from parents for their child to be live streamed, and I'm concerned that there's nothing stopping anyone from recording a classroom on their phone and posting it to social media, or them seeing any behaviors, and which can have social ramifications for our child and other children. So I think it just boils down to a privacy issue and a need for consent from parents.
Okay, I understand.
If the live stream teacher has control of the live stream, and would be doing that for lecture-type instruction, they can shut it down, but it becomes a where students are engaging with one another, or the person at home in that model engages in the work themselves. It's not a live stream 24/7, eight hours a day, that's not how the intent of this process works. As far as videotaping from home, a teacher that's lecturing or doing a direct instruction with them on the screen to students in a class or a student's home, they would be videotaping that, and that obviously adds some implications with laws, if laws associated with that, and posting it. So people who make that choice to do something like that could be implicating themselves from a legal standpoint.
Are there any forms that parents need to sign to say that they will not participate in that?
I mean, we have, the district board does have improved ADP policy. It's one of those things we could take a look at, see what kind of items is in there, and, you know, we're soliciting, make sure that we're, you know, from a legal standpoint, within, so what we can control and what we can't control. And then the last option is virtual, you're not comfortable with that you have the option of of virtual, so that won't be able to happen.
Right.
Parents still have a decision to make.
Yes, but however, for my child, the best thing for her is in-person. She needs that structure, but I'm just concerned with her privacy, and I don't like that I was told that I do not need to provide consent for her to be on camera.
I understand your concerns, and I actually agree with them fully being a teacher, and I also think it is a tremendous disservice we're doing to our teachers by putting that pressure on them, that they're gonna be in charge of, oh my gosh, students, he wasn't supposed to be taped, and now I'm like, it's going to be monumentous.
And my concern isn't in regards to teachers, it's just my right as a parent to be able to keep my child's day in private, and I feel that I'm not given that right, and that's my concern. So do I have, am I able to give consent or not give consent for her to be on camera?
We have in our ADP policy, without understanding what the details of our ADP policy are, they don't have, I don't know about looking at what it is, but I mean, we do have consent for students not being able to be videotaped. And again, the environment of this AEP streaming is not a live stream of a classroom where students are engaged with one another, it's the direct instruction part, where the teacher is being videotaped of their direct instruction. And it should not be of the classroom itself, and the engagement between student to student.
That was not what I was told in the email I received today.
Yeah, we might need to discuss that a little bit more offline after the meeting is over. Because, yeah, so I have your contact info and I will get in touch with you, okay? Okay, thank you for bringing this to our attention, yeah.
Good evening, Anthony Pomponio, 910 Maplewood Drive. I think the one thing we all can agree on here, and I'd like to echo your sentiments, is the School Board, the teachers, the administration, even the students have done a tremendous job over the past six months. I think it's phenomenal what we've accomplished to date. I think, unlike what we said earlier, though, I think we do have three great options. And the one option of the brick and mortar is the option that I'm focused on. And again, I'm not a scientist either, but I do read, I do speak to scientists, and I talk to teachers, and I see what's going on. And I stick to the facts, and I see that daycares have been open since June, no incidences of COVID. Camps have been open since June, no incidences of COVID in Berks County. And the information that's being floated out there, you can talk to an epidemiologist or a doctor and give you a complete different story of what we just said earlier. So I just want to leave it with that, and I hope that the School Board continues with the three options that were presented, because it gives everyone a choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cockle?
Hi.
And Ava Wheaton?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Shane Cockle, 830 Geiger-Tamberg. My concern tonight is, we have a movement right now that's happening across the United States with the defunding of the police, and they are now moving into a potential defunding of our educational system. The way they are gonna try to achieve that is first, if we end up going into an all-cyber, where everything's shut down, you're gonna have teachers just say, we'll use foreign language as an example. You might have two or three teachers teaching foreign language. At home, you only need one teacher, and they could actually either be, they could be demoted to 60% or 80% teacher, because there's level one, level two, level three, level four. Right now, in our scheduling and in school, you have classes that are 20, some places 15, and because of scheduling, you have, you need multiple teachers to teach foreign language. When you go all online, German 1, German 2, German 3, German 4, can be taught by one teacher. This is gonna happen in your science classes, in your English classes, it's gonna happen across the board. It's also gonna happen with administration, you don't need building principals in every building. The custodian staff can be cut in half, because you're not gonna have anyone in the building. So once these people are either demoted or laid off, and just say this pandemic lasts for two years, who knows how long this is going to be? It could potentially get worse and worse and worse, and the amount of educators, it will be minimal, because one teacher can literally teach. In cyber school, they're teaching thousands of students, one teacher. So my question is, has anyone considered a plan? If we do go into an all-cyber education system, what is gonna happen with all the staff that won't be working? Will the taxpayers at Danube have their salaries? Or would they go on unemployment? Because a board maybe five or six or seven years ago could actually really do some finagling, and you'd have 25 to 50% less of your staff needed if we would go down in all-cyber learning. Has anyone thought of that, or had discussed it, or?
Your time is up, but no, and the reason is because we, while we are looking at the fact that, you're right, that, you know, this could drag on for two years, but, you know, I don't see what, it's hard enough in a cyber environment to control a classroom, if you're doing it virtually, of 25 kids. I mean, doing it with a group of 50 kids, ask my son's college professors, not easy. And so that was not our intent, that we would still keep the same level of staffing per students. And also, there was no talk of ever furloughing those teachers in any way, because when, who's gonna come back to this school, you know, after being let go, you know?
Well, it has been done in the past.
But that was not, that is, it has not been discussed, period.
But I'm saying, it has happened not too long ago.
Yep.
And one more quick thing? If you're going all online, maybe move your system back, so we can put more people in here? Because you got that whole back that's empty.
It's, we've got 25 people.
Yeah, there's 25 people in there, and I'm in the ban room.
Yeah, I know, I mean, it's the, that's the state maximum.
Oh, so you can, regardless of how many.
And when, we did try to pull this back, but then those speakers give weird feedback, because they pick up the noise.
It doesn't matter how far away.
So auditorium won't work either.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We could have it outside with the football students. Thank you, Mr. Cockle.
Thank you.
Yes, come on in.
Hi, my name's Colleen Green, I live at 203 Woodbridge Lane in Douglasville. I'm just not really sure what the plan is, because I teach in Ole, they voted tonight, they're virtual. Exeter next door to us is also virtual, Hogs Grove is virtual. I personally would love a hybrid, I'm a teacher, I wanna see my kids. I wish all of this would go away, and we could just go back to normal, but that's not where we're at. So what's our plan? We cannot be the only ones in this general area to go back full-time, we just can't.
We're not.
We're not. Okay.
We're not the only ones going back full-time.
Then why do we want to be the Guinea pigs?
We're not the only school.
But my point is, why do we want to be those ones? Exeter's superintendent made a very lovely speech about that she didn't want her students and the community to be Guinea pigs. I just think, why? What is the point? We are setting ourselves up for failure. What are we gonna make it a week? I just don't know what the plan is. I think that five days a week in this world that we're living in is an unreasonable thing. Ole is very conservative. The parents are not happy, but the Board made the right decision. Exeter, do you think everybody's happy with the decision? But you have to make the right decision for the time that we are living in. I would love for this to all go away, but here we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Conrad Weiser, Governor Micklin, Hamburg, Muellerberg, Hubble Holton, yeah, all right, you first.
Okay, is there anybody else waiting? Thanks. Oh, hi. Hi, Zoe.
Hi, I'm starting your timer. Zoe Sweet, 1856, Old Sweet Road. So as a student, I don't know if this is the right time to address this, but I wanted to make sure I spoke opposed to it. I am all in favor of going fullback, and that's my personal opinion. And I know you guys have a lot of pressure from multiple different people on all sides of the argument, and there's always gonna be someone telling you, oh, being opposed to it. But as a student, going back to school is the best option for us. I know for my students, my friends, not my students, who had online school, it sucked for them, because they didn't get the lawyer here. As a senior going into college, I feel like I need that experience in the classroom, I need that education. As elementary schoolers, not having that time to meet new friends, then hypothetically, this is all over in a year, and they go back to school, they won't know the people, and it'll be starting fresh for them. And so hopefully, I want you guys, when you start to vote and think about this, to think of as a student, going back to school and how it affects them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, we're gonna move on to the finance. I hear some, okay, wasn't sure if they were coming, yeah, yep, come on in. Come in, make a comment? Come on in.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. My name's Alinda Foren, 9106, Victoria Drive, Douglasville, Pennsylvania, of course. I've heard the comments a little bit from the other room, it was kind of hard to hear. I'm for the kids going back to school. You know, you talked about the statistics, but for every statistic- You know, you, you talked about the statistics, but for every statistic, that is for not. There are statistics that's for. I'm out of breath, I'm walking through the other. You know, along with the, you know, it's a risk to go back, because you might get the COVID. There's a risk to go back, um, it is a risk not to go back. And, you know, you have children who get depressed, they get sad, they're not at school, they're not with their friends. So every, for everyone who says, go back, there are people who say, don't go back. Still have breath. I'm not in shape. But anyway, my question is, can you please consider just alternating the start times to the school, middle school and high school? I don't want to put my children on a bus, because it's going to be like those crowded hallways that you see on TV. I have the ability to take my sons to school, one to the middle school, one to the high school, and I can do that. But I can't do that if the start times are at the same time. It only takes fifteen minutes to adjust that, so if you can please consider that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for being out of breath.
Parting one oh three, Balsam Drive. I fully expect the board is probably going to end up swaying to hybrid. I understand what the woman said a few moments ago about all of us, all the schools around said, well, virtual. And where she said, I don't want to be the person who goes to school, I'm against that with, I want to go to school. I want my students to be, or my, my children to go to school, and I don't mind being guinea pig. I know that many families rely on the school to be able to send their kids there for, so that they can go to work. I understand school's not supposed to be a daycare, but let's face it, people use it that way. They need to be able to work, and as we come back to work, they're going to need their kids to go to school. We need to support them. I want you to look at the numbers. I understand that a lot of people are for a hybrid school, and those that want the hybrid school, I would encourage them to go virtual. Allow us that are willing to send our kids or have the need to send our kids, send their kids to school. That way, the classroom sizes are smaller, and if they're smaller, we can see how the effect of it, students being in the same building would be. Will it be rampant? Will it not be rampant? Because we do not know. If the classroom sizes are smaller, we can have extra teachers, and they can take care of all the virtual students. So I think we should encourage the hybrid, people that want to go hybrid, go virtual, take the virtual school, and then let us that have the need or the desire to send our kids to school, to send them to school. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
My name is Shannon Samyel. I don't really like to public speak, but.
Neither do I, so it's fine.
When it comes to my kids' education, um, I'm a single mother, I have no help from their father. I've worked since this stuff happened. When the three, four months when they were home, it was horrible. They didn't do anything until I got home. I had to cook dinner, I had to do everything after that. The weekends, we did work, we're home. So I'm just asking to at least do the hybrid, so I'm there, you know, they're at school sometimes, because I can't do it again for a whole year or whatever. It's horrible. And both my girls are in IEP because of breeding, and it was, it was, it's just horrible to be home, you know, a single mom with three kids, two are in high school and one's in middle school. Yes, they should know how to do their own work, you know, that's partly my fault, but I need help from the teachers. And God forbid, my kids do get it if they go back to school, or the teachers get it. I hope people feel horrible, but I just need help. All right, thank you. Sorry.
No, no, it's fine.
Sorry.
Come on in.
Hi, my name's Megan Allen, I'm eighteen, Terry Court. I know a lot of you have already heard from me. So I'm just here to, you know, just walk before we run. The hybrid option is really our best option. It's giving students ten days at home for any symptoms to arise. And I understand that there's parents that who want full in and say, those of us who want hybrid, we need to keep our kids home. We all want our kids to have that socialization. These kids are starving for peer interaction. I know one of the holdups last meeting was not being able to keep families together. Our school buses already run by neighborhood. If it continues to be the same way, there should be no reason to split up families. Not only that, but I know in my neighborhood, you know, I'm nervous, sorry guys. My neighborhood, you know, my kids, they already hang out together. So you're keeping kids who are already around each other and, and their families together on the same ones. It shouldn't be that much more work for new roads or for climb or the transportation office to continue with the runs that they have and just tweak them a little bit. I have students in the primary center, in the middle school, in the high school. I have one with an IEP, I have one with a five oh four plan, and I have a seven-year-old who bounces off the walls. The kid needs peer interaction, but I want it to be as safe as possible for everybody involved, staff included. I am also a school bus driver. I mean, there's no escaping the kids on the bus, but I miss my kids like hell. I, I wish I could see them. Having some kind of normalcy is super important for everybody. And I understand with work schedules, my schedule allows me to be home during the day to work with my children. But this is a time where we need the community to come together and help each other out. I've had parents reach out to me and pose the option of, hey, would you like to work in pots? We'll get five or six kids together and maybe help each other out. And I think that's a very possible option for, for families who want to work together and help out with their community. Uh, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you guys for speaking, I know it's very crazy right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Simon?
Yes.
Cindy McGee, one oh one North School Street. We're struggling to hear, we have no video over there, so if I repeat any other comments, I apologize. Look, you, you guys are in a no-win situation. If you want to one hundred percent, you know, stay away to do things, yes, online is the way to go. I personally would love my child to attend school because I really think it benefits him. I think our teachers are fabulous. I think the interaction does him well. I think he needs the structure. I think online really doesn't work for him, but you're in a no-win situation. I would say this, I'm prepared to my son to, to send my child to school, but I would say other parents that are also willing to, you absolutely need to be sure that you're also willing that if one kid gets sick in your classroom, that you and your family have to quarantine if they stay home. So if you're going to make a commitment to send your child to school, you also should make a commitment to stay safe if they are in contact with someone with COVID. So I don't envy your decision, it's really a no-win decision. This whole scenario is a no-win, so good luck.
Thank you. Mrs. McGee? All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. And we had several people say that they're having trouble hearing in some of the other rooms, and so I will do my part by speaking really loud. So on to our first item on the agenda, which is finance two A.
I made a motion.
One. That is the, that is the, that is the other?
Yes, there is no two A one.
That's a cow? And so finance is two A one only. Do you have, do you have a motion for that?
I'll give you a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, I, um, just, just, I don't know if Mr. Hurley is the one to speak to, why we have a new vendor?
Our security company, Energy Security withdrew from the contract. They were not able to comply with state mandates, which are quite extensive in terms of training of personnel. So in the end of June, they sent us a letter withdrawing from the contract, so we had to reach out to numerous companies, and this is the most competitive bid that we have.
Board have any other questions before we vote? Monetarily, is it substantively, substantively the same or is it a little more?
It's more, they were the lowest bid we had.
Yeah.
Reason why the prices have gone up across the board in that is because of the training.
The training requirements. Yeah, they put more money into each person. Okay. If I have no other comments from the board, can I get a roll call vote?
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Shrubler?
Yes.
Mr. Scott? Yes. Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
All right, I'll pass.
Okay, um, uh, next item on the agenda is programs. Let, let's take the, the agenda edit of the addition of the possibility of delaying the start of school. We'll take that separately. So let's go with three A one. Do I have a motion before we discuss? And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I'm going to say things, and then, and then I'd like the, the board to each get a chance to kind of say what they're thinking about this decision, and then we'll, then we'll have the board like ask questions of the administration if, if they have any. Does that sound okay?
Sure.
Okay, so the, um, the survey results, we sent out a third survey two weeks ago, three, two weeks ago, and the, the survey results were less than, less than helpful in helping us make a decision, you know, whether or not, how parents feel is, is a, is an ingredient to making this decision, but it's not the, it's not the whole pie, you know, because there are other things we have to consider other than parents' preferences. But parents' preferences were thirty-five percent roughly, wanted their kids in school all five days, thirty-five percent wanted their kids in school on a hybrid model, and thirty percent wanted their kids in school virtual only. So there you have that. And so, um, the building's going to take off, I guess. Okay, so then the, the other thing that, the next thing I wanted to mention before we start talking, there are new guidelines from the state that were released eight.
Need to get closer to my mic.
Do I need to get closer to my mic? Okay.
The sound's bad.
Our sound's bad. Is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry, I guess. So guidelines from the state, um, new guidelines from the state on opening per county were just released by the Department of Education and Department of Health this morning at about ten thirty AM, where they have labeled every county based on several factors. The Department of Health has labeled every county as being an area of low transmission of COVID, moderate transmission of COVID, or high transmission of COVID, um, and has given recommendations for each of those. If your county is low, your recommendations are to, to have your school choose. This is not required, but this is their, this is the guidelines, this is what they are recommending, that if your transmission in your county is low, you should have all kids in school, or you should have a hybrid model. If your transmission in your county is moderate, you should have a hybrid model or online only. And if your transmission in your county is high, you should have a virtual only. So as of twelfth today, Berks County, in the last two weeks, is labeled moderate, which means that by those guidelines, if we were to abide by those guidelines, we should be choosing a hybrid or virtual model, which is not what we chose two weeks ago. Doesn't mean we can't choose to leave it the way it is, it's just if we do, we are going against the state guidance, or the state recommendations. Guidance is different than recommendations. Third thing I want to say is that ultimately, no matter what we choose today, we might get into a situation where if we had all of our staff showing up to school, we could serve the community and meet the social, meet the social distance requirements of a, in a hybrid model, but we might not have all those teachers come to school, and we might have to ultimately decide to go virtual anyway. So I just wanted to throw those three, like actual facts, doesn't have anything to do with how I feel about the situation. So I'm going to put Bucky on the spot.
I, I personally, or do you want me to discuss what I'm going to vote on right now, or?
I, um, what I'd like to hear, if you're going to tell me how you feel about which way we should go, that's great. If you're going to throw out just all the things you're considering, that's fine. If you just have questions, that's fine, too.
I, I really don't think I have any questions, but I, you know, that my, I guess, we, we talked the last time about going five days a week. I, I certainly, including all of us, have certainly received our emails and stuff from people. I think we're, we are in, I may just feel pretty, I mean, I think we're in a no-win situation. I mean, I, I, you know, I left my house, Kevin was asking me, I asked, I have three kids that are still in the school district, and I asked them, I walked over here, I'm not going to say what they said, but, but they, they gave me their opinion, you know, certainly, so it's, is it, is it, right?
Get closer to your mic.
Oh, sorry. Okay, anyway, so long story short, I think at this point I have an idea what I'm going to do, but I'm not going to say it right this second. But yes, I did ask my kids, I have three in this district. I think some, some of our emails that stated, you know, I think, I think, let me just say this, I, I feel like we're parents too here, and some of these emails that came through were pretty strong, and, and I kind of like to say that, you know, it wasn't necessarily fair. We're here every other week, we volunteer for this position, we trying to do the right thing. I used to sit right out here with, with, with the audience and, and see how boards scale ups up. I think this is a board that really considers things through and through. I really want justice anyway.
Thank you, Bucky. Beth? Mrs. Albright?
Yes.
Make your phone.
I used to be loud. I have gone back and forth, as has everyone else, I don't think I've ever heard that. I see everyone's side, I actually do. Some people said that I was selfishly choosing an option, and that may be correct, but I have four children in the district, and they're in high school and the, you know, reading center and the primary center, and I feel they're representative of, I'm an average family, I'm a representative of, of a lot of families, and I'm a woman. And last week, or two weeks ago, I voted to go back fully in person. I think it's the best for kids. I'm a teacher who does the best for kids. And just because I'm saying I, I want to go back, it doesn't mean that I don't believe COVID is real, and it's really telling me that I don't believe it's real, it's happening. It just means that I choose to prioritize and abandon fear, and I'm willing, and my children are willing, to go to school, and I think that's what they need to do. I will never advocate for virtual, I think it's a horrible choice. It will be much better than it was in the spring, because we have a totally different platform, but I just don't think that kids need to be online anymore than they already are.
Mr. Shrubler?
Along with everyone else, it's a challenge. It's a challenge to, um, sit here, I have seen it this year as well, and it's a challenge to, um, think about this, that all this has been thrown at us, that's the estimate that any school jersey that's been told that they're prepared for what happened is not going to show. they were prepared, but what happened is not coming true. And I think we did a great job last year. I think the administration, the teachers did a phenomenal job last year for what they were given. And that's how we were in this room. The hybrid was the middle of the road because it gave some socialization. It also gave some separation. It was a crawl, walk, run mentality. And it gave the option for people to go virtual if they wanted to. But it at least gave some face-to-face at the time. We all voted. We settled that we would all go back. Where it goes tonight is still to be determined. But there's challenges involved. But I think this last piece that we got to hand in today to the Department of Health is a challenge for everybody. So, the recommendations are important. So, that's really, it's just a tough choice. How about that?
Ms. Bell?
I too voted for a full return during our last meeting. I still would prefer that, but based on the guidelines that we choose today, I believe we have to follow this time span. I do not, will never think that it's okay not have kindergarteners, young children on trying to do that virtual learning. They're not, it's not effective for them. It's not going to work. And I also think we consider the other taxpayers in the district. So, it's not a daycare, but society depends on Monday to Friday schedule. And so, that's important in my decision as well. So, if I, I'm going to go with the recommendations of the state, I would go with the scaffolded hybrid model, K-35, one in person, and high school, middle school are... What?
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ms. Leoni?
So, I've been able to reach out to some community members and get some feedback from them. And I got a very high percentage of people that were looking to go back full-time. And there was definitely a very low percentage of people that was looking for a virtual. And it was kind of in the middle, a little bit lower in the middle for the hybrid. I just have some concerns with the hybrid and virtual in regards to my background in behavior support and especially as my background is in, as my job is in. And I have a real concern for some of those special needs children and how this is going to affect them if they're kind of back and forth or their routine is off, or if they're all on virtual. So, that's a big concern of mine. I know that's a big concern for a lot of people here in the state as well. And like everybody said, this is, I don't know, it's a situation, no matter what we do, it's going to be difficult for some of these people, so.
Mr. Miller?
Okay, I get to go last?
No, I get to go last.
Yeah, it's clear that the community is split. I just, there are many different opinions, and there are many different opinions even from the medical community and from the state and all. I too feel strongly that kids really need to be in school if they can. And that's first vision forward. It is done safely, so what's the best way to do that? I agree, a form hybrid at this point would be a way to get back into going to school and seeing how it works. That's the way to do that. And obviously, it's the younger kids that really need to be in school more. And from the statistics we've seen, they generally are less infected. You know, that is changing as all country changes. That is one of the faults, is that younger children are susceptible and don't transmit. At this point, I would be more, it's strategy. It's all yours, your way.
Your three minutes are up. All right, first, I wanted to say something. I had a couple, I heard a couple of board members mention that they heard some less than constructive feedback from the, from the community. And, you know, as I said before, you know, the same thing that I said about the teachers and the parents and the students, just trying to get through this and do their best. I have felt nothing but that from this board, and I think we are trying to do our best. And the, 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 the level of ugliness I saw over what is agree, which I totally agree, is a very impactful decision to every family and every teacher. You know, every single one of us up here either was appointed to this board or ran unopposed. And when I saw the level of vitriol, I can see why. You know, it's not a fun job. If, I, I don't whine too often. I don't care what people say about me, but I care what people say about the rest of the board. And I didn't think it was fair. And I didn't, I didn't think it was warranted. And, you know, take that for what it's worth. So, I have a hard time. I'd have a hard time supporting a move to whole school five days a week just because it's in, it contravenes the state's, the state's recommendations. I think that that leaves us in a situation where if we're not following the best recommendations the state's putting out, even though, you know, we can argue about whether or not it's the best recommendations they can put out when they put it out 10 hours ago, you know, if we're not following that, I don't, I think we're doing a service to the teachers that count on the Department of Ed to take in the interest of all state coordinators when they're sending out those recommendations. And I think that we are opening up our school district to potential liability issues to not, to not go with their recommendations by at least choosing a hybrid option. I did, someone else mentioned earlier that, you know, I said this to another board member just the other day. I don't, just like I didn't want to be on an island being the only school district offering online only, which was definitely a possibility four weeks ago. I don't want to be on an island only being the only group offering five days a week. We're not, but it's getting, the island's getting awfully small at this point. There's only four other schools on that right now, and they're, and some of those schools are voting to reconsider that based on the recommendations that just came out for our county. So, that's kind of what I wanted to say. I do, I am moved by the fact that perhaps a scaffolded model might be what we could, what we would be able to, where the young, where the young kids, K-35, could be going to school five days a week, and older students would be going to school every other week and doing their online. I could see that being okay if it meets the requirements of the recommendation, but I'm not 100% sure if it does. But if it does, that'd be fine, knowing that we might have to make a change if we can't, if we can't staff it. And I don't want to leave our teachers and our administration in a situation where we're constantly, like, tweaking their objectives and moving their goalposts so that we're setting them up for failure. I don't want to be in that situation either. So, someone want to make a motion for any of the four options? Don't all jump at once.
I'll make a motion for the hybrid, which I think is number... Do you recall it, number?
Hy, all hybrid? All hybrid or scaffolded hybrid?
Stackle.
Wait, I would...
Stackle is K-35 in-person and middle school and high school hybrid.
And, and hybrid is everybody going to school every other week?
I'm going to take my motion back.
Sorry.
You know, because I'm, we talk here, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't... There's a second. I must have missed that, that particular one.
Why don't we, why don't we make a motion for what we already agreed on? See if everybody's still on that same page. If not, then we'll move on.
Fair enough.
Do you want to make, so you want to make a motion for five day? For all five days?
Let me help you out here.
You're making a motion for... You're making a motion for the plan with all five days?
I am making a motion for five days.
Do I have a second for that? Can we have a vote?
What is the, what is the motion?
All five days.
What we had last two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
What, or are we, are we just...
Of course, if we don't change it, then it's a win.
So, it's more like...
We, let's narrow it down. Let's narrow it down.
Well, you can't.
Okay, and?
You can't. You'll vote on something else that you haven't gotten rid of what we've already voted on.
Yeah, I get you.
I think we all get you.
I hope so.
Wait, who's second on that motion?
Mr. Struble. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Leoni.
Okay, Ms. Leoni?
Yes.
Yes to that? Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mrs. Bell?
No.
Mr. Struble?
No.
Mr. B. Scott?
No.
Ms. Olson?
No.
Four no's, two yeses.
All right.
Can I make a motion?
You can.
Yeah, with a hybrid?
We discussed it. We think we made a motion.
Okay.
It's a little...
Never.
I'm going to put the time on.
Oh, actually, no. We should probably have the motion, and then we'll move on to discussion. So, motion for scaffolded. And I will second. And if we want to have some discussion on that before we vote. Go ahead.
In our meeting, the concern was that we could do something like that. The concern is that if you vote for something in tonight, and you didn't two weeks ago or a week ago, and then the administration has to run towards that goal. That's the option they have. And then it changes, and then we're here, and they got to run towards another goal. And we already know that there's a strong potential, based on our conversation, that they're not going to have enough staff to support that model. So, we can vote on that now. And that's one of the reasons they made the recommendation, the administration made the recommendation to go to hybrid because they felt it was the safest model, and it was the best opportunity to be able to stay. If we can vote tonight, if they can't stay, then what are they? Just if we vote tonight, if we can't stay a little bit for now, if we find out they can't, we'll change directions.
We could change directions. I was sort of anxious with these implications. I do have a question. Said there was a strong probability. I'm not sure I heard that. I heard it was possible, that we wouldn't be able to stay.
There's always, there's always possible they won't be able to safely stay at the model.
Right, but Mr. Struble characterized it as strong.
That's the impression I got from it. So, I intentionally, I didn't intentionally use that word. Because I, I've never given my opinion. I love that model. That's one I just want to make sure. Right, to protect children's safety. I think it's a real problem. Sorry, Mr. Struble. I think it's important to understand that there, there are issues in individual circumstances in any, you know, any employee, employee situation, regardless of what field you're working in that may prevent employees from returning to work. So, I think, you know, that, that's always got to be in the back of, back of our mind, and in the arm of the employer as well, for our professional staff, support staff, initiative staff, and so forth. So, that's, you know, I'm calling it that one for now.
Scott?
I do want to say, like, one thing that concerns me about scaffolded is, my understanding is that our concern of certain, some people that may not want, be able to come back to school are from all grades. It's not just, it's not just the middle and the high school. So, we could be down some teachers, at least for the first quarter or so. You know, some, some teachers are parents of kids who are in other school districts who have online, and they don't, they don't have the op, they, they won't have the option to come to school. And so, we have to figure out what to do there. If we have, if we have roughly a little less than a third of our class, of our kids in the elementary school that will be doing an online option, we could have classes if they were all, if they were all there every day, we'd have classes where those, those classes would be, like, 14 to 16 kids every day. If they were, if we were having those kids there every other week, that would be closer to eight children. We might have fewer teachers with reservations that are coming in due to social distancing issues. It's a big difference. I, I know that that might not move other members of the board because it sounds like I'm just trying to second guess and, like, try to solve problems before we know what we have. But I am, as, I am concerned, as Mr. Struble had said, about offering direction and then having to stop and turn around constantly. We could always, after a month, if things are going well, step up to five days a week for elementary school. We don't know what the new school's going to look like. I'd be much more comfortable with a hybrid model than a scaffolded model. I'd rather, I'd rather, I'd rather err on the side of caution, not, not zero, you know, not, not incredibly low probability of contracting COVID because no one's in the building, but significantly reduced because there's half the number of people in every building all the time. Does anybody else want to talk about scaffolded before we vote on it?
I think that for the kids in those younger grades, those are times when children are hurting their social, emotional, and those basic foundations of their education, which is going to be very hard for a parent to teach at home. I'm not a teacher. That's not what I do. That's not what I was instructed in. That's not what I want to teach. And so, I know even for me, and I know a lot of other people here, that's going to be very difficult in those younger grades. Older grades, they can kind of take that direction, direct it a little bit easier. But those younger grades especially, kindergarten through grade, they're learning those basic foundations that they need to have taught by a teacher that's educated to them. And I think that, you know, I really want it full in school, but at this point, you know, I think that scaffolding is the best, best, best option to them.
One of the things I want to, I want to reference, saying to be clear, that the in-person environment that we are discussing and have a conversation about is not that of which our students experienced last fall, pre-COVID. With mitigation efforts that we have in our health and safety plan, the social distancing where feasible, to the extent possible, the students lined up in rows, less engagement with peers in a collaborative environment will be prevalent. Just so we're clear, it's not an in-person environment that we may have been used to in advance.
Any other comments before we vote on scaffolded?
I have a question. It's directly to you or the administration, but which is the plan? Because I'm confused. Which is the plan that you're recommending? This plan, the scaffolding?
Our recommendation is the hybrid K-12 model, which was the initial recommendation two weeks ago.
He's starting with blended, and we're talking about scaffolded.
I got that now. I just...
That clearly just means K-35.
K-35 all the time.
Six through 12. Full length. Yes. And the virtual option available for everybody.
Correct, and also, and there is a lot.
Correct, virtual is available in all those options. Scaffold is K-5 in-person, six through 12 in a hybrid environment. The one that we recommended two weeks ago and is the same one we're recommending now is the hybrid K-12. It feels though that that is the safest option at this point. Feels though that that is the safest option at this point in time for following students.
And you, and for the K through what? Five? I don't know, but the, it's a scaffolding version and?
I, and again, it's, it's difficult to.
Right.
Promise the social distancing, but in a, a, a hybrid model.
Still a 50%.
If they be, we have a better chance to make that happen than we do with an only person. I'm sorry, that was.
No, no, it's fine. Are we ready to vote on that? Okay.
We're going to vote on the scaffolding.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Struble?
It's the model that I want. I'm going to go with the administration. I'm going to say no.
I'm going to say no. Scott? Ms. Leone?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
No. Motion passes.
Motion passes.
All right, so. So we've just voted to go with a scaffolding model, which would mean kids K through five would be in class five days a week and kids six through 12 would be in school Monday through Thursday alternate weeks. And the other six days, both Fridays and the other Monday through Thursday, would be doing, uh, virtual learning or, um, or assignments at home. And, uh, yeah, we, I mean, the administration still has staffing concerns. Um, so, um, they, they will keep us apprised and we will keep you apprised of where we are. But that's, that's the administration's recommendation. Um, that's the, that's the board's vote, um, is to go with the scaffolding model.
At present, we will update the, uh, plan to reflect that vote in the event to the Department of Ed as per requirements. There's also some, uh, items that have to be adjusted in the new plans.
Okay, and then the next thing is the added item, uh, um, 3A2 to, um, to, um, delay the start of school until August 31. Uh, do I have a motion for that?
Yes.
And do I have a second? Okay. Um, so, um, just for everybody assembled, the, um, the, the reason for this is, um, is, uh, we have a lot to do. And, um, um, we'll be, um, um, offering the, uh, teachers some, um, extra professional development before school starts. Um, I don't know. Do you want to get into the details of what some of that's comprising or we're good? Yeah. Um, so, um, does any of the board members have questions about the extension of, I mean, the delay of what starts?
How does that affect the end of the year?
Oh, um, if we vote yes to, um, we will, we will have a new, um, we will have a new calendar, um, at the next board meeting to, in two weeks to see. It shouldn't affect it much because.
What it does is. It's like with snow days or we're going to have a week.
Yeah.
If those students have these days that are already scheduled in the calendar and on October 1 of December, or I'm sorry, Monday of November, then it moves them to that, um, that week before. So those days will now be in person days for our students.
But we, but we will have a calendar to vote on next, in two weeks.
So the first and starting date of school will be August?
The 31st.
31st.
All right, Monday, August 31.
And, um, with no other questions, can we have a, a voice vote? All in favor? Is that okay?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Um, can I get a, um, motion for personnel for A? Yeah, for A of, oh, one, I guess.
Ms. Bell has a second?
Yeah. Any, any discussion on that?
I'm just going to use, we're just doing A with.
Yeah, the, I'll get to the reason why in a second. We're just doing A.
All right.
Any discussion before we go? Can, can we get a, a vote?
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Ms. Leone?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Yes.
Now I get it.
And, um, can I get a vote for, um, a, a, a motion for four B, one, one and two?
I have a motion. Oh, Ms. Bell?
No, that was Ms. Albright.
Ms. Albright, all second.
I'll say it.
Um, any, any discussion on those two appointments?
I think I'm super excited about it or not.
Yeah.
Playing online?
Can we, uh, get a vote if we are putting?
Ms. Gray, two.
Four, uh, four B, one, one and two.
Great. All right, uh, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Ms. Leone?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Uh, yes. Um, let me just say, um, Mrs., Ms. Wendy Sweet is here and congratulations on your new position. Uh, she's, uh, worn many hats in school over the years. Um, now we're going to move on to the agenda edit. We're going to move on to the agenda edit, uh, personnel appointments, A, four, B, one, three, which is, uh, the, um, appointment of a new school board member, Ashley Godfrey. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second. Oh, Ms. Bell.
Ms. Godfrey is here. Hi. It's, it's now, it's time to go to the podium. I, uh, let her know that if she had any prepared comments, she can make them. And then, um, if we had any questions, we would ask them.
I just have a, just quickly, um, my name is Ashley Godfrey. I've resided here in the borough for over five years. Um, beyond being a resident, I also have four children living in the district. Are you a kindergartner? I'm a second.
No, it's okay.
Second.
He's going to check you out. Sure.
All right, sorry. I have a kindergartner, a secondary grader, a fifth grader and a seventh grader. Um, my mission to joining the board is not only to enrich my children's lives and be positive in the community, but also to get for other families in the area.
Does anybody else have any questions before we vote on her appointment? Do you have any questions before we vote? You're, you're the only candidate, which, which makes, which makes this, this interview a much, much more limited prospect. Um, um, so do we, um, can we have a, can we have a vote?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead and sit right now.
This might be uncomfortable, hold on. Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Ms. Leone?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Congratulations. Um, while we are still in session, um, I'd ask you to come and, um, would one of you give her the oath? Here. Can you give her the oath?
Who can grab the purse?
What's that? Oh. Oh, okay. Can we give her the oath at the beginning of the committee of the whole?
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to adjourn, um, at the end of this meeting and, uh, you will be sworn in at the beginning of the committee of the whole, which is still like just fun this way. All right. Um, presentations by the public on issues, um, from this room or any of the other rooms. I'll give the people from the other rooms a couple of minutes.
Mark Cook, 203 Wimby, Miami County Township. Um, I'm looking for clarification on state guidance versus recommendations. That, that word seemed to be thrown around interchangeably with this. Can someone clarify that? Is there a difference between department of education guidance?
There is, but the, but the, but right now, this, the page that the, that the Department of Education has put out uses the words interchangeably. But yes, there is a difference. Um, um. Guidance is a stronger term than a recommendation. Um, but in ne, in neither case did the state say that like our funding is in jeopardy if we do one, if we don't do what they say or anything like that. But they could theoretically do that if it's guidance and not recommendations.
It's pretty clear. You said it wasn't a mandate.
Right.
It, it wasn't a mandate.
Was not.
It's not a mandate.
It's not a mandate. But it's, so it's a recommend, like, so, so you guys.
So we took it into, we took it into account when we were making our decision.
My understanding, and it seems like there was some confusion even with a couple of you guys, the scaffolding versus hybrid.
Mm-hmm.
So the hybrid is what Dr. Cooper recommends.
No, there's two versions of hybrids. There's two. That's the problem. He recommended what we used to call the blended version, which is everybody does the same thing. They go four days. They're off for 10 days. We went with the scaffolded version. I feel like so against it. That's definitely it. But that K through five goes all the time, five days a week.
Right, so.
It sticks to twelve.
But that's against Department of Educate, uh, Department of Education's recommendation slash guide, guidance.
Well, that's to be determined.
That's to be determined.
They, they use the term, they use the term hybrid and they don't define.
So you guys are voting on something that potentially is, can't be voted?
You mean, you mean that we are voting on something where we might, if we get clarification?
So you're voting, so you get, you guys sound like you want to follow guidance and recommendation from the Department of Education, but then you vote for an option that's not included in that?
We are not. No, it's, uh. There's two hybrid options. The state, uh. Hybrid. They did a very rich model. They did make a recommendation.
So what, how does the state define a two hybrid model?
They haven't.
They haven't yet.
They really have not defined and, uh, they have not defined. They use the term blended learning model.
Okay.
So a blended learning model can be a combination, uh, and we use it, we use the term hybrid which is interchangeably with blended. So a, a blended model can include a staggered approach to opening and without having, uh, specifics as, uh, definitions as to what they consider to be a blended or hybrid model. Interpretation at this point, my understanding interpretation is that can be considered a blended option.
So, so, I, 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 I can't be the only one that's confused by this.
Nope.
Hy, so, so what is the state or the Department of Education? What term are they using? Hybrid, blended?
They use blended.
They use blended, but they're not defining what blended is at this point.
What it says, what the state, what the state guidance says is blended hybrid learning model is any model in which the number of students in a school building is reduced to allow for social distancing. This may be accomplished in many ways, including split schedules, schedules that rotate by day or week or similar approaches. For these recommendations, blended learning also includes scaffolded approaches that treat grade levels in a different man, in a differentiated manner.
But then the Department of Education.
No, that's from the Department of Education.
Right, but they also, they have three clarifications. They had, you know, three classifications.
That's what they defined blended hybrid learning as.
So both.
Which was one of their options.
Both of the options were.
Both of the options meet that definition.
That definition.
And we chose scaffolded as opposed to all.
But someone just said that it's to be clarified, so we don't know if it meets that definition. Did someone over here say that it needed clarification?
I think Julia just found the definition.
I found the definition while we were sitting there.
Julia doesn't time it.
Okay. I, I'm just, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you what the, what the State Department of, this is, this has been available for less than 24 hours.
It's my time off when you guys were answering questions.
Do you have any other questions?
Uh, yeah, a lot.
Okay, there's a three minute time.
What's that?
There's three minute time.
Right, but that's to a total. Not when you guys stumble over your words in, in answering questions, it's not off on my time.
Okay, so what are we down to? A minute now?
What's that?
Are we down to a minute? Is that where we are or?
I don't know.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Ask your next question.
Every time I stop.
It does, that's not the way that timer works.
Okay, so we all respond.
So, so go ahead.
Right, now your question.
So I just wanted to be, you guys to be clear that you're going against the administration's recommendation.
Yes.
By a vote, by a vote of four to three.
Yes.
That's what happened.
We don't know, what are the ramifications of that?
But going against the depart, it's what the, what?
Are the ramifications?
There's none from the Department of Education based on that definition that they've just, that, that has been laid out. Unless the state gives us new recommendations or more guidance that countermands either what they've given us so far or gives us further recommendations, it means we aren't, we aren't meeting the requirements, well, the recommendations that are being given to us by the Department of Ed. And then we have to change the way we're doing things.
There's still many ramifications. It's not a mandate.
Correct.
There's no ramifications because it's not a mandate?
Correct.
It's a recommendation. It's not a mandate, so there's no ramifications. Did we know?
No, there are.
Change tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, come on in. Hi.
My name is Angela. Girl, I live in Los Angeles. Um, I just wanted to kind of clarify what I heard. In the beginning of the meeting, it was said that you would not be able to social distance, like the recommendations for kids if they go to school. Was that correct? That you want to be able to follow the guidelines for social distancing?
Um, the, one of the teachers made the comment that it could be problematic.
The boarder? The boarder? Is the school going to be able to follow those guidelines? No.
Well, there's the virtual option still. Some people have already elected that, so there'll be reduced numbers of students in K through five with that option. Right, but you can't guarantee the, the guidelines will be met, right?
Actually, we were, we were pressing, am I allowed to say the number? Yeah, I mean, we were told before the meeting that 412 people have actually signed up out of the 3100 already have signed up for virtual. So that, it takes a little bit off. Yeah.
Is that like through, I guess, K through 12 then and not just, I guess, I guess K through five?
There were the large number, wasn't there?
Yes, that's correct.
Who are very virtual.
And then, um, will, um, K through five be able to do like a week on or a week off? Or is it just going to be then in school or in school?
Right now, it's in school.
In school, so they don't have the option to be back there. So if they were to get sick, then they would do digital learning? Maybe they'll do digital learning, right? Would that still be?
They, they, they're either virtual, right? They're home and they're, they're either virtual option. They're at home.
Of course, of course, if you have a child that's ill, the, our regular, like, um, providing of, um, homework the way we do, do for any illness, even if it's a long-term illness, would, would be the way that would happen. If you are quarantining but well, then you'd be doing, doing work virtually, yes.
Would, would the, if they were live streaming still or is that not going to happen then?
Is it going to be safer or?
Yeah, yeah.
If the choice isn't our, the annual digital learning one, I guess that is part of that plan. Now, I want to be clear that live streaming doesn't be, that a student is in front of their computer seven, eight hours a day, watching a class, and a teacher and all the engagement that's happening in that class, that's not how it works. The teacher has the control of the device that after a direct instruction environment, they can turn it off, and the students engage in classroom with one another, and the students in the digital world will engage in the work independently.
Okay. Will the schedule be coming out for that, so we know like how long it will be? Because I think as a parent, that is the one thing that I'm trying to figure out if that option is better than laser virtual academy, like how long, what the schedule's going to look like for my child.
In the laser virtual academy model, it's more of an asynchronous model where there is versing, is any very minimal engagement in a live streaming environment, whereas in a digital, there is a portion of it that would be a live streaming environment.
I'd like to get clarification on switching back and forth between in person and the laser learning. Are there parameters on that, and is it semester and quarter, or what, how would I, if someone can go to the in-person, the digital, or the digital back, what is the guidance?
I think that depends on what the situation is, whether a student's quarantined or not in that type of environment, and, you know, it's individual based.
But whether or not, are we trying to option, they could go, you know, a month, virtual and then come into school, or are we not doing that?
That wasn't part of the, the model was built to be catified in person. The circumstances, if students need to be quarantined because of the illness, that's a different scenario, but if in a staggered approach, catified in person means students choosing that option, we'd be catified in person.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, it's fine.
If the scaffolding or the learning doesn't work and Daniel would have to go full virtual, my question would be, do you then go to the red schedule even though it's not typically the red phase, was that the schedule that would be placed if you're full virtual?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Hi.
Hello, Shane Cockle, the 8:30 header calendar. Tonight, you've changed your vote from the five days to a scaffolding. The board members wanted to follow some kind of guidelines from certified state, and one guideline that everyone refuses to talk about is sports. The state has clearly said there should be no sports. The IA double A was all upset about it, universities were all upset about it, some colleges canceled their sports, some schools canceled their sports. What is Danny doing, Jamie not doing? If you changed your vote because of the guidelines of the state, going into a scaffolding, if you guys would feel bad, if something would happen, not following the guidelines, but there is one thing they were very specific about, there should be no sports. What are, how come you guys aren't discussing the sports part? There's full contact football, full contact basketball, wrestling, I mean, there's no social distancing. I mean, kids are going to go to other schools and get sick, and it doesn't show up right away, maybe three, four days, they're in the school building, infecting other kids. But we're going to scaffold and protect the kids and then let them go practice every day, travel all over the county. Why are we still doing sports? Do you guys want to follow the guidelines?
Well, first of all, it's a strong recommendation that Governor put out, it's not a mandate. It's a strong recommendation from Governor not to have sports. The PIA double A is pushing back on that, they voted 32, so for the late two weeks, all are discussing. And the challenge I have about it is if you do that, the kids are just going to fight about the sports, the kids just can afford it and have them doing it all summer, so they're going to be playing anyway.
So we're waiting, currently, we've had an extracurricular meeting at 8:30 today, and we're, my understanding is we're waiting for the PIA double A more guidance on what we're going to do.
The state was very clear though.
The state was very clear.
Like a good party, but whether the state?
The governor was clear.
The legislature was not too clear.
So I want?
And we didn't get, we didn't get recommendations from the Department of Ed or Department of Health on it. We were working through the channels, the department, the superintendents and the athletic directors are making more conservative recommendations to the Berks IA that will then be transmitted to PIA double A when they have their next meeting, and, you know?
The PIA double A has suspended the start of fall sports until the 24th of August. That was what they had come out with, and what they indicated is the health and safety plans for athletic activities was for approved, is they continue to be followed for voluntary workouts through that point in time. Between now and that August 24 date, it was anticipated that they will be meeting, PIA double A, it is there intended to be meeting with the Governor's office to give some additional specifics with regard to his strong recommendation that he made publicly. The superintendents have met and discussed even previous, the August 24 date, to extend the start date even longer into September, beginning September and continue the voluntary workouts there. Now, that's a local decision at the DCIA level, and then there's the PIA double A was with, trumped that decision, so we're still waiting for further guidance.
Like, isn't a little bit hypocritical that you want to follow the guidance of opening a school and having kids back in five days a week, and then say, well, there's a strong recommendation from our governor, no sports, and then just keep allowing them to not social distance, travel together, exchange bodily fluids, because you know they're spiked and everything else.
They have to find all over the place where they're playing basketball.
Excuse me, see, I don't remember, time is all, we need to vote again.
There's no discussion, that's why I brought it up last week, I asked for it to be on a survey, it wasn't. I keep bringing it up, no one's talking about it, so once again, I'm making it up again.
I should come to the extracurricular meeting, if you have an extracurricular meeting at 8:30, so the next time there's an extracurricular meeting, come to that and structure concern with us, and that is what we're talking about in those meetings.
I'm sure it's going to be something you want to vote on.
Yeah, we don't have anything to vote on.
It doesn't need to vote on this one.
Right. I have a son to play soccer, so I get it. So I have the order to play sports too. Yeah, so I get it. I'm just bringing it up, you know, you guys changed your vote tonight.
Not all of them.
Not all of us, and I understand it, but it was enough to switch it, because of the guidance that you would feel guilty if someone would get sick, and you want to be as clear as possible, following the guidance. And one thing that was specific out of everyone in the upper room was there should be no sports. Parents can't come, the public can't come, and yet you have full practice going right now in sports.
It's voluntary, it's not, so it's not full, but I do?
But you're offering it.
I hear you, and I heard you, and I read your emails, and I heard you last time, and your time's been up for a while, and we gave you a lot of leeway, and when there is an opportunity for us to vote on it, we will, and I'll keep your thoughts in mind. And in the meantime, come to the next extracurricular meeting, it's completely empty, so it'd be nice to have somebody to watch. All right, thanks.
Julie, it's fair to say that we didn't vote?
Don't encourage him, no, just kidding.
But I'm just saying, we didn't vote that last vote based on what the Governor said. These are, this is the Board of Health.
Yeah, it's the Department of Health.
Yeah, this is different, I mean, the Governor is just, you know, sending out Twitter, I'm not saying, I'm not, it's a guy, but, you know, it's a little different when we just voted on it, in the Department of Health. But I get it, I get it, I mean, it's the same.
Your concerns are not?
I get it, I get it.
Your concerns are not invalid, it's just, it's, yeah, okay. Thanks, Mr. Cockle.
How you doing now?
I'm feeling good. I have my breath, I'm a heart attack, I got here a lot. But anyway, you all know that I'm a little paranoid, as I mentioned, but the last time, my address is 106 Victoria Drive. I have to say thank you to all of you for doing what you're doing. You know, you're spending your time to come here and do this, and these are very hard decisions to make, so I thank you for that. Many years ago, I was standing up here for the flight before I came to Florida, and I was really worried as a parent, and in retrospect, we got through it, and our kids are doing just fine, and they're going to get through it again. We're going to have kids that are going to graduate as doctors, as nurses, as lawyers, so I'm not too concerned. I'm not too concerned about my sons, because I know that I'm at home with them and I can help them, but there are parents who can't help their children, so I'm concerned about those children. I've worked in the healthcare field for 20 some odd years, I can tell you that, you know, you do get, you can get so good. Kids are out right now, they're playing, they're having sleepovers, they're involved in club sports, my sons are swimming, they are running, and they have not, they have not gotten sick yet. I've worked in the school setting, and I can tell you, as an occupational therapist, I've seen a lot of kids trouble who don't have a parent involved, and that's what I'm worried for. So please consider them. I know that we're making our vote today based on what's going on today, we are in the moderate risk category, but next week we might be in a low risk category, and we might not be following the recommendations of our state. So, you know, I was all for going back to school, I'd still like for my children to go back to school for the mental wellbeing for them, and I think that there are ways that you can allow children to go to school, and have online services as well. So, I don't know, if there's a committee of a full meeting again, it's, you can go at any time, you can go as much as you want, but I know there's a lot of preparation that goes into it. As for sports, like I said, you need that for the mental and wellbeing as well, and again, my sons have been spending the whole summer, they have sleepovers, I'm in the healthcare field, and I'm allowing my children to do this, and they have not gotten sick yet, and they couldn't get sick, but if they do, the risk of fatality is very, very low. They'll get sick, they may get it. So, and then again, transportation, please consider the transportation. I love to take my children to school, I just go with them in a little small bus, so if I can take my one child to middle school, and then quickly run over to the high school and take him there, that would be wonderful. So, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Dr. Cooper, is that something we can consider?
Change of the times.
Starting time, yeah.
Staggering the times, so that parents could have the option of riding to school instead of transportation?
There is a lot of moving parts here, and you're asking me to tell you a yes or no right now?
No.
And I can't make that promise or that, because whatever decision is made, something else comes up that has a domino effect. So, I mean, we can look into it, but I can't guarantee something.
That's what you can ask. Then we can look into, because it seems like, it just seems like something I can understand that you don't want them riding a bus right now, and so the ability?
But they have a choice, for sure.
Right, they have a choice, if they'd be able to take their children, if they don't feel comfortable with them riding a bus.
And we also understand as a board, you can't make a decision now, it's just?
No, you have a lot on your plate.
Just have to do this?
Something I would?
He just flipped.
I know, he's on page, he's on page four.
He's like, are you kidding me? Bob's out.
Bob just passed out in the back.
It's called delegated.
And just one last thing, I'm sorry, in our time of unrest, I think you have to be very sensitive to the people who are low-income people, because they're the ones that are really knew about, the rich are going to be the ones to do well with home, online schooling. Where we are wrong, and I can say for me, I have a lot of entertainment, so just please take that into consideration too.
That's great.
Yeah, so thank you very much, I appreciate it, I do.
Thank you.
It's all right.
We have another one? Hi.
Hi, how are you? I'm just jotting some notes in here, um, Jennifer Beazem, who are four personally. I just want to first thank you all for your time and commitment and willingness to listen to so many concerns, I know that there's really no answer that's going to make everybody happy, and that there's a lot of high emotions in every direction. And I really appreciated the information that was shared through the Zoom for the Daniel Blue Virtual Learning, I felt like that was very informative and helpful and kind of put me a little more at peace to see the options and what was already in place in our district. I guess my concern mostly is with the hybrid model, I was really hoping for the full hybrid versus the scaffolding, I just, I have kids that are catified, and I think that if we see that the administration is recommending hybrid, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Not scaffolded, but hybrid?
Correct.
Okay. You know, that they have experience with that, they know what can be put in place, what KPE equipment is available, and I just think by choosing scaffolding, it almost feels like we are not getting those same, like, that are catified students, that are catified teachers aren't as able to get the virus, aren't as able to, you know, I just feel like they should have those same, I don't know how to explain it, but they're just as important, you know?
Right.
They should be able to be social distanced.
No, you said it, fine.
Okay. But, so I'm not a public speaker, but I'm an elementary school teacher, I've taught first grade for many years, and I know how challenging it is to keep kids distanced at all, and I recognize that, you know, the differences have to do with supervision at home and things like that, but I feel that catified are the kids that we're going to have the hardest time keeping them distanced compared to the older kids who are able to do that, and you're catified, they're in the bathrooms, and they're high-fiving each other when they're about to arrive, and around at recess, and they're touching each other, and they're at lunch, and, you know, grabbing food off each other, and as much as we try, they're going to be touching each other and spreading germs, it's just one teacher is not able to be on top of all of that at once, as much as we try and want to. So I guess my other concern also is with the union president saying that they know they can't guarantee that, that's the stance that all of the teachers are coming with, all of these catified teachers are saying, you know, this is how we feel, we feel that we cannot keep these kids separated and social distanced, so I'm concerned that we're going against that, I'm concerned that we're going against what the administration's recommending, I'm concerned that we're going against what the Department of Education in a way is recommending. I mean, I've looked at their information, I know that, you know, if they say hybrid, they don't really necessarily break it down to blended or full hybrid, but, you know, if they're saying, if they're saying full return is discouraged, then I'm concerned that we're still doing catified full return, because we essentially really are. And while we may have some less numbers, which I recognize, also, when we signed up for that virtual option, it was sign up for virtual so that you have that option, whether you're considering sending your kids to school full-time, but you want to be signed up in case you need to fall back on it, sign up for the virtual option if you're planning on hybrid and you want your kids to have both options, or sign up for virtual if you're planning for full virtual. So while we have 412 that are saying we'll do virtual, that really might not still be a true number, because a lot of people did sign up. a true number because a lot of people did sign up just because they wanted to be on that email list of having virtual. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just clarify, 412, those people that are back in the early sign up, it wasn't using the server.
I'm sorry?
Then they actually, actually signed up?
Yes, correct. And I did too. I did too, but I was signing up hoping that it would be the hybrid.
Okay, thank you.
Then I just ask a question. I mean, is that possible that like after tonight's vote, this lady right here that decides that she wants to go virtual with her kids, is that even on the table?
They'd still go virtual.
They'd still go virtual. So at least that's still, that's still an option.
I did sign up for virtual.
Okay.
I did. I just didn't know if it would be virtual, hybrid, virtual, pro-virtual. I just wanted to have it depending on what.
Yeah, fair enough. I just wanted to just ask.
We have a couple more standing outside? No?
Okay.
Okay.
Trying to look a whole with people.
No, no, I get it.
I'm Jennifer Cook, I'm from 203 Winduine. My questions are in regard to digital learning and class size, as I have a student who needs third grader. And with the digital learning, a lot of what I've heard from other parents is that they can pick and choose what days they come to school. There's a lot of confusion that it's how often, how much. So class size, really one day can be thirty and the next day can be five. And that is a concern because then we're not doing a lot of social distancing and it's a lot of inconsistency as well for the children that are in the classroom.
I've heard the same question from a lot of people and I'm going to throw that to Mr. McKnight.
I just think there needs to be clarity within the community.
Agreed, okay.
My child is going to whatever option we, we're hoping for.
If you have any other questions after he answers the question, you can go ahead and do that.
Dr. Cooper spoke to Oliver, the reason we couldn't cover that until we do a structural result. So the technology has a flexibility to do whatever we want. However, the discipline issue commanding, you know, is very difficult, students coming in and out daily, right? So I think we should, I thought Cooper was about depending on the health diagnosis, it's going to be based on that and obviously we get that to students, but you know, that would affect that time if you were going to be in a blended model, you're going to be in a scaffolding. So that's, I think, a lot of time hasn't been turned down with scaffolding.
One of the, if I can interject, one of the things we want to make sure that we are not doing is in a blended model, a hybrid model, and maybe which is what the board, the six and twelve model, the older one this evening, is to, is to take a step back on the mediation efforts that we're trying to put in place with regards to safety, the social distancing recommendations to be ten feasible to the extent possible and so on and so forth. So if we're putting ourselves in a situation, this community, we're starting to compromise that, we're going to have to change the rules of the game.
And I think we change that potentially what you're looking at in regards to virtual because parents, a lot of them were planning on sending their kids and they're like, oh, I'll see even in case things get worse and the district doesn't do it, but I'm planning on sending my kid day one. So again, I think number buys and thinking of social distancing, it's very inaccurate when we look at digital virtual learning to what potentially would be my son's class. That's drives me.
We definitely need to firm up what the expectation is soon.
Yes, I mean, people signed up in varying misconceptions and now I think we have invalid numbers to figure out what we're really doing within our school.
We decided to get the numbers to like, so you know, the number of people that interest was about 12, I think. The number of numbers was actually closer to, or at the fore.
And I'm not disagree with that, but I've talked to people who have signed up with the intentions of not using, because you are planning for them to use. And that's, and they're telling me it's okay and they have emails from building principals, some said sign up if you're pondering it, some didn't. There's a lot of advice going around everyone's direction. So as a community, I think it's not being used in the way that maybe as a board who thought it was going to be used and that needs to be addressed to make sure our classroom sizes are appropriately handled is one of my big concerns in here. And my second is just to be careful, as my eight-year-old versus going four days and having a couple of days off. I watched many of you today play with your masks, have them under your nose and be everywhere else, which is totally fine. But now just think about an eight-year-old trying to spend an entire school day, like for ten days versus four days in a classroom and then having some days off and working on schoolwork without his mask at home. So just, that was my last thing. I went to, you know, we're adults and we're struggling. So an eight-year-old is going to be way more comfortable for a much longer period of time. So something to think about when we're thinking about what to do with our kids. Thank you.
Hi.
Bang, you almost.
That's okay, that's okay.
I just want to piggyback off what Jen said a little bit with the full in kind of for catify. I'm pleased with the vote, having at least a hybrid option for my other two. The full in for the catify feels like it is going against the recommendations, obviously of the administration, but also from Martin Health and everything. Berks County has eighty-two out of a hundred thousand cases right now that are positive. Once we hit a hundred, then we go to that red where we would have to be full virtual. That's eighteen people in an entire county. I, that's not a lot. So my main concern is how do we seamlessly take these kids from going to school five days a week and then say, okay, you're back home, we're right back at lunch? If we started in the middle, it's easier to go full in, say, January, when things, flu season's over, you know, not every kid's got the cough or the symptoms, or to go full virtual, say, November, when everybody's out sick. I just, I think that just makes more sense. I realize we already voted and there's going to be another vote coming again from people. But the main reason I'm here, so we talked about 412 people signed up for virtual. I am one of the people that signed my three children up for virtual. It was my understanding, the way I interpreted it, was that we had to sign up for the virtual and we wanted that option. And at the time, those were the only two options. So now that hybrid is on the table, or scaffolding is on the table, I want my kids to be utilizing that option. Are we able to make that change? Is it going to be like a big switch in the numbers? I just don't know how that's going to work for people like me and I believe that Jen, we want our kids to be in support.
We could be in a, we could be in a situation where we're significantly understaffed in one place or another if we, if all of a sudden, everybody decided to switch from one version to one, from being on an all online to being in school or hybrid, or from being in the hybrid to all virtual. So there have to be some guardrails on that, but right at this moment, we don't know what that's going to be, whether it's going to be two weeks' notice, whether it's going to be once a quarter, we don't know.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to upset you.
Oh.
I signed up for virtual.
Yes.
I'd like to be all virtual. That's never what I want.
So, so if you make, so if you make that change before, if you notify the school of the change you want to make before school starts, then you won't be locked into it.
That's, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, so, but if you waited until like the second day of school, that would be more of, that would be a pro, and wanted a change, that's a problem.
Right.
But, but if you, but if you contacted your principal or professional development, Doug, or you, principal?
You work, you're the principal.
Yeah, contact your principal, tell them that you want to make a change, but do it before school, before the, the, some of the prep that they're doing isn't going to change, but some of it is. And so it was a good time to get that information to them.
So is it possible?
Yeah.
Okay, contact the principals of each school for this time.
Yep.
Then carry on.
Yep. Anybody else? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Okay, we're adjourned. Do you want to take, take five before we come back? Is that, is that necessary for anybody other than me?
I'm with you.
Okay, so anybody who's staying will be back in a couple of minutes. Depending on how many people leave, we might be able to bring more people in this room.